It's now five thirty, electorally March thirteenth, twenty-three, county council meeting.
Dear Lord, we thank you that you listen to us. Please help us listen to each other. May each of us around this table really hear what our team members are saying. Enable us to acquire and understand the accurate information we need and its implications, so we can make informed decisions. Help us hear the complete message being communicated. Help us not get distracted. Help us avoid thinking of what we want to say when we should instead be listening and absorbing what is being communicated. Amen.
Do you have approval of the agenda?
So moved, second.
Probably move it second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Now, a public comment on the agenda, a public comment on other matters. Let me just be clear. We will not have the same participants coming to every meeting, commenting on the same thing. I will not have that. I mean, I think you wasted too much of counsel about the time. Once you come and we hear you, we know what you're talking about. The council are grown people up here. We're going to make grown citizens. So, you'll have one time to come and make that comment, then you're not going to be able to come back and comment again. I'll dial you down. Just being clear. Okay, now, do you all have the list?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wernier Walling.
I am Wernier Walling. I was raised on a farm in Fort Myte. I'm Mary Dick Walling from the Buildinger Community. We have been living in Calhoun County for nearly seventy-four years. My son, his wife, and four children also live in the county. And we all love Calhoun County. We are Americans who live in a free country where we can vote and live in a democratic society. We have the right to own land and make decisions on our land as long as it is legal and environmentally safe. Right now, I am facing the decision of changing my agriculture farm land into solar farmland. I have heard reports that solar farms are dangerous environmentally. I have researched solar farms and found that federal regulations strictly oversee the solar farm operation that assures a positive environmental impact. America cannot continue to depend on foreign countries to supply us with fossil fuel. We have to find ways to provide our own energy resources. Wind farms, turbines, solar farms are some of those resources. I applaud our county council for boarding a six-month study monitoring on these solar farms. We owe Calhoun County that to assure us that solar farms are safe. And that's, I want that. Just one final thought. Lots of you don't remember this. Nineteen-seventies, late nineteen-seventies, Union Camp announced that they would start construction of a paper mill in Eastover, South Carolina. In that area, woke people were outraged. I remember hundreds of people attending meetings right here in St. Matthews, Sumter, Richmond Counties. And at those meetings, they would report that surrounding areas could be affected environmentally in this paper mill.
Mr. Walling, I'm going to let you finish with your three minutes. It's up, so try to hurry. I said, I'm going to let you finish with your three minutes. It's up, but you can go ahead.
Okay, I'm just about through. Surrounding areas could be affected environmentally. Rivers contaminated due to discharge, fallout over our land due to nighttime discharge into the atmosphere, and an awful sulfur odor and smell in our air. Land would depreciate, crops would be affected. I worked for these people for twenty-eight years. They were good environmental neighbors, provided lots of jobs in our area, paying an abundance of taxes in Richmond County, and preserved Kensington Mansion, increased large inventory on our number-one farm crop, which is forestry, and here's a resource to sell products. I think Union Camp proved to be environmentally safe, even beneficial to Calhoun County. And I believe that solar farms will also prove to be beneficial to the county also.
Mr. Jimmy Sykes.
I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Everybody in this room, I think, first thing they do when they get home or go in their business, they like to flip that switch. You're going to have to have electricity. I'm not saying it's all good or bad, but you're going to have to think about new ways. And the only other thing I want to say, I don't like somebody or some government telling me what I can and can't do with my land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. G. Redmond.
Will I be allowed to speak since I've spoken on this before?
If you speak on the same thing, no matter. Mr. Francis Madden.
I heard you loud and clear. You know where I stand. Thank you. But thank you for the time to speak.
Mr. Larry Wagner.
There was a council, at least I'm changing from what I've talked about in the past, that I was referring to the ordinance, the twenty-twenty-three dash-two ordinance. And then I understand that it has been changed and rewritten, which I applaud. And I really appreciate you looking into that because, as I look through it, you can see on my page that the yellow marker is there, and several places it talks about county council and referring to the county council, referring to the county council. And then you have a discrepancy of you have to refer to the county administrator. I think that does, is it consistent with the entire ordinance? Probably going to be a legal problem. So I appreciate you looking into that, and I think you've probably got it correct. Thank you very much.
Ms. Alicia Scott.
Hello. I just want to introduce myself. Alicia Scott, foreign race, Calhoun County. I am the deputy treasurer and filling in Becky's roles because of her passing. And if you don't be council members, some of mine do know, and some of them are new to me. If y'all have any questions or anything, don't hesitate to give me a call. Thank you.
We wish you well.
Thank you.
And that's it, Mr. Chair. Do you have no public hands? Do you have a motion for approval of the February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting?
So moved, second.
Probably move it second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Do we have any committee reports, anybody? Committee reports, any appointments? We have one proclamation. Do we have that proclamation?
Yes, sir. I have. If you'd like me to read it.
Yes, I shall. That's the recognition of American Red Cross.
Whereas during the American Red Cross month of March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Calhoun County, and we affirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Calhoun County, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than a hundred and forty years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. Whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference in neighbors indeed, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and general donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it, and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now, therefore, Calhoun County Council, by virtue of the authority vested by the laws of Calhoun County in South Carolina, does hereby proclaim March twenty-twenty-three as Red Cross Month and encourages all citizens of Calhoun County to reach out and support in this mission. In witness thereof, I have set my hand this thirteenth day of March in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-three, end of Calhoun County, South Carolina, signed by James E. Hager, Chairman, Calhoun County Council. I'd like to say certainly, this is a worthwhile effort, and we're always looking for volunteers in Calhoun County. So please, if you feel the need, if you want to, please pass the word. We are looking for volunteers. And just to let you know, I want to thank our EMD Director, Dave Trinacki, for putting this in front of us and getting some information. So last year, in two thousand twenty-two, we helped twelve individuals and families in Calhoun County. And so certainly, it is a direct impact to our citizens. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Could I come in as well? As many of you know, I spent twenty-four years in the company. When I was a company commander, I had people from all over the United States and territories and everything else in my company. And a lot of times, as a company commander, we really don't know everybody that gets served in Calhoun County. A lot of times, I would get a call or get some message that said that some soldier's family member had died or something like that. Soon as I got that message, first thing I would do is pick up the phone. We would pick up the phone and call the Red Cross. And the Red Cross would verify, first of all, it was true. Because I have had calls trying to get somebody sent home, just because they called home and tried to get sent home. But second of all, it can help us work through getting them home if they needed to go home as a result of some catastrophe. But they are worldwide service and a lot of things they do for ourselves that we don't even know.
Do we have a motion for approval of that proclamation?
So moved, second.
Probably move it second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Under appearances, Dr. Toby.
I was a little worried when I saw the deputies in the audience, but I saw that you're on the agenda chair, so I don't know. Mr. Chairman, members of council, Mr. McLaughlin, members of staff, I would like to begin by thanking the county for their support of college. This is an effort that we all engage in as support of our community, and I'm just thankful for all the things that you've done to help this college be successful. I would like to begin by just talking about economic development for just a second. If you look across the state, we're seeing increased activity around electric vehicle production. So the manufacturing of batteries, the production of vehicles in the EV space, and also the addition of solar manufacturers as well. So I think either one of those are generating lots of interest in the state of South Carolina. And if you think about electric vehicle production between the Volvo plant in Low Country, Mercedes plant, BMW plant, the announcement of the Scout Jeep in Richmond County, that this area really is poised, I think, for economic development around either of those two employment sectors. And so, we are well on our way there. I have plans, and I've been talking to John about this for years, a new advanced manufacturing building. We got eight million dollars in last year's budget from the delegation. There's an additional five in this year's budget. I've asked for twelve, so there's still some work to be done. But our goal really is to create a training facility for new companies coming to Orangeburg and also in Calhoun, and also provide them some opportunity for them to develop their product as they build a permanent facility. So we've got some tentative plans for space, around thirty-two thousand square feet, that we think becomes attractive to those companies looking to relocate to this part of the country, and in particular, this part of South Carolina. Second, we are in the process of developing our strategic plan for the next several years. Quite frankly, we have been in survival mode because of the pandemic, and now we're making this transition into trying to thrive. We've had some work teams that have been trying to assemble some strategies as we look to next year, and we really are focused on three things. Simple access to post-secondary education. If you know anything about the nature of this workforce, in order for folks to get good jobs, good benefits, good opportunity for career advancement, they need to have some post-secondary credential. That number varies between sixty-five and ninety-five percent of the jobs in this country. We've been afforded a grant, two grants actually, one that allows us to do what we call the weekend warrior. So those individuals who can't come to campus during the week, we're going to make some arrangements for them to be able to come, get some additional training on the weekend, focus on primarily the healthcare sector and also the advanced manufacturing sector. So we'll have faculty available to teach these classes. We'll have some support staff to provide the critical academic and social support for these students to be successful. The other thing is, we have a number of folks in this part of the state that have some kind of training. We call that continuing education. And our hope is to build that bridge between the con ed transit that might have received and the credit programs that lead to higher wage, higher demand jobs, both in advanced manufacturing and healthcare. I'll keep using those terms because in this area, those are the biggest employment sectors, and I think those are the biggest opportunities for folks to earn a living wage and to be able to support their families. The second kind of theme for our strategic plan next year is really about student success. And while we wait to get the feedback from our faculty and staff about what to do, one of the things we are making a change for for the fall is we're taking a full sixteen-week term, where students would normally take five classes, and we're breaking that up into two seven-week terms. So students would take two classes at a time, or three, term one, and then they follow that up in term two. The research has been pretty clear about students focusing on smaller subjects for smaller portions of their time, and it actually allows them to finish faster. We're building some terms in between, the fall and the spring, the spring and the summer, the summer and the fall, that allows students to progress kind of at their own pace. And then thirdly is just focusing on employee recruitment and retention. In this climate, it's very difficult to attract and retain quality employees. We are competing with other colleges. We're competing with private industry. And we're a state agency, and so there are limitations in what we can pay. But our charge really is to provide a good learning environment for our students and a good working environment for our employees. So those are kind of the three tenants that we're operating under going into next year. We've got some renovation projects underway, so the machine tool technology program has been in the same facility since the eighties. And that kind of is the bedrock for manufacturing, this ability to machine parts. And so we'll spend roughly two million dollars to renovate that space and upgrade the equipment. The nursing building, the former nursing building, the K building, will spend three, four million dollars to renovate that space. For those existing programs, physical therapy assistant, EMT, advanced EMT, John?
Thank you.
And Rad Tech. And then lastly, just looking forward, I've had a conversation with the interim CEO at NUSC, and so in addition to the programs that we are offering now, we've had some conversations about some additional opportunities. One, farm tech and sterile processing technology. So as this transition to NUSC occurs, I think it's an opportunity for us to build a stronger partnership with the NUSC network, not just NUSC hospital in Orangeburg. Again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your support of college. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Dr. Toby. I didn't want to compliment you, and tell you, we appreciate you. You wanted a few state agencies to come like this with their hands stuck out.
Don't worry. I'm coming back.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions for Dr. Toby? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Share some of the personality.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Council. I come to you all tonight just to give you some information ahead of budget talks involving personnel. Some history maybe that none of y'all know, probably because when I started with the county, none of y'all were on county council. So you would not be able to know that. But in nineteen eighty-seven, when I started, the sheriff had six deputies, and that was the entire force. Thirteen years later, when I took office, they had twenty-two deputies. So they grew sixteen deputies in that thirteen-year period. Now, the first year I did budgets, and I'm doing some of this from memory, I was preparing a budget for the first year in office. We had twenty-two deputies, and they had answered five thousand calls for service. And of course, they had civil process and warrants, and just like we do now. But the calls for service is what I was basing my numbers on. Today, twenty-three years later, and this is all based on last year's numbers, twenty-nine thousand calls for service came in our nine-one-one center. That's EMS, fire, and law enforcement. Almost twenty thousand of those were our calls. So we went from five thousand calls with twenty-two deputies to twenty thousand calls with twenty-eight deputies. Now, that's twenty-eight slots. I don't have twenty-eight deputies. And coincidentally, these people I brought here tonight for several reasons. Number one, I go to them every day and tell them what I'm trying to do, what the county's trying to do, but mainly to tell them to be careful. I want them to be able to go home. So I thought y'all may want to meet these people, because when y'all dial nine-one-one, that's who's coming. When you're having the worst day of your life, and you dial nine-one-one, that's who's coming. But as I looked at these numbers, I realized our agency has only grown by six men in twenty-three years. Now, it grew by sixteen in thirteen years. Five thousand calls versus twenty thousand calls for service. Now, not only twenty thousand calls for service, our investigative division investigated nineteen hundred major crimes. They also secured over five hundred warrants, served eight hundred civil papers, and evicted a hundred and twenty people. That's a lot of work for this group of people that hadn't been really added to in twenty-three years. Today, we're five deputies down and two waiting on a phone call to leave. That puts us at operating at seventy-five percent capacity, but our patrol division is operating at fifty percent capacity. That twenty thousand calls for service is operating on half-staff now, to where I've had to put some of the command staff on shift answering calls, and that is not that big of a deal. They don't mind, but it'd be kind of like you putting John and Richard on Ron Moore's or a motorbender. It's getting that bad. Just in the past four weeks, I've lost one to the highway patrol. I've lost one guy, a young guy, that we hired a couple of years ago, sent him to the academy. And these are huge investments we're making in these deputies. The Calhoun County's making it up. He came to me and said, Sheriff, I don't see a future here for me. I'm going back to civilian life. He had been trained as a deputy, been through the academy, had received specialized training in special operations. He was a trained and certified canine handler, and we lost him to civilian world. I got one waiting on a phone call from Sledge. Vince, come up here. I want y'all to meet Vince. This is Vince Barber. He's been with us two years, Vince?
Yes, sir.
Two years. We got him green. Calhoun County made an investment in him. We sent him to the academy. We got him certified. I've sent him to different classes because I had Vince kind of scheduled to be a spokesperson for our agency because he's such a likable guy, doesn't meet a stranger. Everybody loves Vince. Vince is waiting on his phone call. He's leaving us. The reason he's leaving us, and he told me with tears in his eyes, Sheriff, I love working for you. I love these people, but I can't pay my bills. So all the investment we have in Vince and these other ones I'm talking about are going down the drain, and Vince is leaving for a twelve to fifteen thousand dollar raise. Each one of these people are leaving for a twelve to fifteen thousand dollar raise. Come sit down, Vince. Thank you. But this is just an example. Vince is just an example of the good people we have attracted on the minimum wage that we're paying them, but they come, they love it, but they just can't pay their bills. You know, we're competing with agencies now that are offering sign-on bonuses, retention bonuses, and a starting salary that's about fifteen thousand dollars higher than what we're starting at. So when people come in and get on that vacation, we interview them, and the first thing we tell them is the starting salary. That's the end of the game. That's the end of the conversation, and they don't talk anymore. And I know we're a small county. I've been doing this for thirty-six years right here in Calhoun County. So I'm no fool. It's the small county, small government. But we could decide, you know what, Calhoun County, maybe we should raise the bar. Maybe we should try to set the standard for small county in support of our law enforcement, because we've got a great group. Now, this group's size is really small right now because we're down so many people. And we still got a couple of people out there to call. I didn't pull them all in because I still got a job to do. But when you are afraid, when you're having the worst day of your life, and you call, these are the people that you call. Now, I've always prided myself on having a fifteen to twenty-minute response time. And we offer numerous services to the citizens that other sheriffs have not been able to offer. But as my staff goes down, 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 the response time is going to go up, up, up. So in fifteen to twenty minutes, that seems like forever when you're frightened. When it goes to an hour or an hour and a half, of course, then the people are going to be really angry because that's as quick as they can get there. I just can't help it. I've either got to do that, or we're going to have to cut some services. To me, a response time of a half hour alone is unacceptable. Unacceptable, should be unacceptable to y'all. And I know it's unacceptable to the citizens of Calhoun County that I've served for all these years. When they call, they need us. And when they need us, I'm going to be there. With limited staffing, I just can't do this. Now, we have spent money on a bunch of things. Calhoun County, over the last few years, I've watched, we got beautiful recreation facilities coming up. We got walking parks. We've got a country club. What I'm asking is for once, put these people as a top priority on y'all's budget list. That's what I'm asking. It's easy to call nine-one-one and just take for granted somebody's calling. But the people you're taking for granted are these people, hardworking people, but they want to be able to pay their bills, and they should be able to. These aren't day laborers. These are trained professionals. These are educated people in law enforcement that not only put on a gun, but then they have to put on a bulletproof vest to do their job. Now, that, you know, a lot of people under their breath be saying, man, come on, give me a break, Sheriff. But that's just the facts. That's just the facts that they have to put on a bulletproof vest just to work their shift. We choose every year, y'all as our governing body, choose every year what y'all want to invest in. This year, I'm asking you to invest in these folks. Every year, budget time, I go back and I tell them what y'all tell me. Sheriff, we've been looking out for you. We've been looking out for you. I've gotten six men in twenty-three years. Six additional deputies. I see you looking at me, figuring in your head. I'm trying to, that's why I'm giving you the numbers. We got sixteen in thirteen years. Since I've taken office for twenty-three years, we've gotten six. Our poll volume has gone up by fifteen thousand a year. Our call volume has gone up by fifteen thousand a year. Six men doesn't sound like it would cut, does it? So you? Exactly. I'm glad you agree. I'm glad you agree. Because you're on the finance committee. You and the chairman had to step out. I wish you could have heard the rest of my talk. Well, y'all are on the finance committee, so it'll go before y'all first. So what I want y'all to do is, because I tell these folks how important they are every single day, and I make it a habit to tell every one of them every day, be careful. Be careful.
Right.
Now, this is what I want you to do. If they ain't worth it, y'all tell them. If it ain't worth it to you, y'all tell them. I can't do no more. I'm gonna fight every day, because like I told you all in the previous meeting, I'm elected. Doesn't matter what you pay me. I'm going to work. I'm gonna do my job, because the people of this county elected me. These folks aren't in that same boat. They can negotiate that stuff, and that's what's happening with these five people. That's what happened to Vince. He negotiated. So anyway, there they are. You want a good investment? I've brought you one. Any questions to me?
Anybody have any questions for the chair?
Well, I sure appreciate y'all's time, and I would appreciate your consideration. Come budget time. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not on the agenda, but can I have thirty seconds?
No, sir, you can't have no.
Thank you, sir.
I would send for applause this time and next time. Though I got the chair, if I didn't put you out. Uh, so you, y'all and I, we run this council meeting. There's no applause. I don't want applause for me. I don't want them for the, we trying to run it, the meeting here. Our chair, he was called down there.
That was for our deputies.
Sir, please, if you'd be quiet. Okay, who was for? Okay. I just want to say one thing. We have tried to help every organization here in this county, the deputies. Everybody work for this county. I mean, we can't just take all our funds and put one place. You mentioned recreation, which we didn't have any in this county yet, which other counties have for our children. I think sometimes when these children have something to do, that'll make it less for these sheriffs and deputies to do. We keep them out of trouble. So it's a lot of stuff we have to do. Everything is under our umbrella. It's not that we hate the deputies. I wish we'd do much that we can for them. Budget time is coming up. We talked with John a little bit about that the other day. We gonna see what we can do for them.
Mr. Chairman, are you addressing me?
No, sir, I'm addressing. I'm not getting any confrontation with you.
No, no, I'm just gonna, I mean, I'm not.
I'm, I'm, I'm doing a revolve, and I'm telling the folks that we're not, we're not against the deputy sheriffs.
Right.
Don't get somebody in front of that, but we're not trying to help the deputies. We trying to help everybody in this county, not only the deputies. Everybody's up under our umbrella. I want you to know that, so come budget time, we'll look at it. I'm not making any promises ahead of the day to say we gonna do this or do that. And, uh, we gonna do what we can for them. I don't need a chair, these, I don't need my ex-opponent to come in there and try to make campaigns and stuff for the next election. I'm not, I don't appreciate that.
That's not what this is about.
Sorry, I appreciate it. Be quiet, like I told you.
Yes, sir.
Don't chair this meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No resolutions, no business, no new business, uh? Uh, John, do you read the ordinance?
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two, uh, second reading. An ordinance to amend chapter two, article five, with respect to the historical commission.
They have a motion for a second, approval of second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the ordinance that we, uh, we voted on last time, and that amendment should remove the words under paragraph two dash two seventy-two, would remove the words under the administrator, and it would read, "Who shall operate as the Department of the County", under paragraph two dash two seventy-three, uh, some paragraphs five and ten. It would add the words, "The banks of state and/or other associated properties in both of those, both five and ten." That's my motion. And that is, and that is the new, what was at your desk when you came here, uh, today, is that, was that, um, was that amended version?
Are you making a motion under here?
I'm, I'm moving it to amend.
Amendment, okay. Our king made us want you to amend it. Been that, uh?
Second.
Probably move to second and further discussion. All you pay by eye?
Aye.
Opposed is likewise the eyes have it.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve for second amendment ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two as amended.
Second reading.
Yeah, second reading.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Probably move to second and further discussion. All you pay by?
Aye.
Opposed is likewise the eyes have it.
All right, sir. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Calhoun County, South Carolina, and Project Chateau, acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project sponsors, pursuant to which the county shall convey to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad luring tax with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county. Number two is to the inclusion of the project in a multi-county business park, if not so already included. Number three is the approval of providing certain special source revenue credits. And number four is other matters related thereto.
Have a motion for second reading, ordinance twenty, twenty-three.
So move. Second.
Probably move to second and further discussion. All you pay by?
Aye.
Opposed is likewise the eyes have it.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash five, second reading. An ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on applications in administrative processing for approval of solar projects or farms of more than one acre salt outside of industrial areas and within the unincorporated areas of Calhoun County and invoking application of the pending ordinance document.
Have a motion for approval for second reading.
So move.
Second.
Probably move to second and further discussion. All you pay by?
Aye.
Opposed is likewise the eyes have it. That's complete, the ordinance is, John, you down to do?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I think that is ready to be backed down.
Just read it.
I just want to tell you that, when we, before we have third reading, we have a public hearing. You can come up with an address if you want to address that for that direction. Okay, if nothing else, I make a motion, uh, give me a motion for adjournment.
So move. Second.
Probably move to second and further discussion. All you pay by?
Aye.
Opposed is likewise, thank you, everyone. Kevin?